Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Carson City School Board to order. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda and before I entertain a motion, I had to ask you to consider that number nine on the agenda, dealing with restorative practice or restorative justice. It has a subsection and actually our policy will pertain to the entire law 392, so we'll just strike the section from that. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion from the floor.
So, am I understanding you correctly, you want just the subsection of that agenda item stricken or the whole agenda item to discuss it in full?
We're gonna, the whole agenda item is revolving around item three, NRS 392, not just that subsection.
Oh, okay.
So, we've been advised by Ryan to make that a little bit more accurate. Do you want to weigh in, Ryan?
No, it, the citation is correct, but there is reference throughout chapter 392 to restorative justice or discipline, and so I think it's just a little more accurate to refer to the chapter generally, but the chapter itself was published, so you can take a conditional motion to approve the agenda, subject to that minor change.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of item nine to include, not be limited to NRS 392.466, but rather to the whole section, NRS 392.
All right, we have a motion from Joe, second from Laurel. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, any public comment about the agenda?
Seeing no public comment.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Second item on the agenda is the flag salute. Trustee Crossman, would you lead us in the pledge? Next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report. This is for information only. Good evening, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker, members of the board. Good evening. I'd like to start my report this evening by giving a brief update on our Transportation Department. As you know, our Transportation Department has been inoperable due to COVID-19. We had several individuals that were impacted, and we have let the community know that we'll continue to not be running our Transportation Department until September 29th, and at that point, we'll be operational again unless there's some new case that we have not heretofore been made aware of. I'd also like to let you know that we've received some questions today and earlier about our reporting of COVID-19, and with the help of Mr. Davis, we have a location on our webpage, it's right on the front page, where you can find and click on that, and if you do, you'll go to a portion of our webpage that describes where we are reporting the information that's provided to us by the health, the local health department. And so, we're following their guidance, their direction on that. Particularly, people have questioned the illness of students under the age of 18, and I wanted to talk about this just for a moment because some folks feel that if there's any students in our community under the age of 18 that has been identified as COVID, that they're automatically affiliated with our school district. Well, that's, that could be not true because we have students that attend other schools in the community. We have some students that might be variance to another school district, so even though their local address might be identifying them as a student under the age of 18 in Carson City, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're students within our school district. So, I just kind of wanted to make that known because some will say, well, there's got to be more than that, or there are more listed in our community, why aren't they part of the school district's reporting? So, if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to spend a little time and explain that in greater detail. As you know, last week, we were plagued with poor air quality, and that had certainly an impact on our schools. We had three days where we resorted to full remote learning. I'm happy to say that the current forecasts have our air quality index showing up in the good to moderate range, hopefully for the next several days, and I know that that can help everybody's outlook. It was kind of a tough couple of days when we had all that smoke. I also have been receiving a number of inquiries regarding modifications to our school operations. As you know, the school district selected a process for school reopening. We're now in our fifth week, going on to our sixth week of that reopening process, and I want to say here tonight again that the governmental restrictions under which we formed our reopening plan have not really changed. We are still in that situation where there's an expectation of wearing face masks, as we're doing tonight, that we maintain social distancing, which we're doing in our schools, and that we function both our buildings and our school buses in a 50% occupancy, occupancy condition. And so, we are looking, however, and listening to our staff, to our community. We have received a number of inquiries about potentially making some modifications, so I'm working with staff, and we're taking a look at those numbers. But at this point, we're carrying on with our current operations. If there does look like a possibility to make any changes, that information will come to you first, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss that prior to making any changes. Certainly, we'll be working with staff and with our employee groups and with our community to make sure that their interests are well heard. A couple of other things that are of interest. Our local Rotary Club has made a very generous donation through their foundation, and they'll be providing a personal air purifier for all of the staff members in our school district. These are devices that are meant to be used and that can clean the air of about 300 square feet in any particular room, and our Rotarians felt that because our staff members are emergency personnel and for the good that they're doing our community and certainly our students, that they wanted to provide air purifiers for the personal individualized use of our staff. These devices will not be the property of the school district. They'll actually be owned by the individual staff members. Staff members will be permitted to use these devices either in their classroom, in their homes, in a home office, or in their office at school, really any place where they feel like that there's a need. Really, the only restriction will be that the employees will sign a hold harmless letter excusing both Rotary and the school district from any breakage or repair or filter replacement, anything like that. These are devices that will be actually owned by the school district member, and the first round of distribution is such that it won't quite cover all of our staff, but our Rotary friends have said that they certainly will make one of these devices available for all of our staff members, but we'll have a round one distribution and round two. And I've been working closely with the group there to make sure that that is done in an equitable way. And then finally, the community PLC will be held tomorrow night, and we're doing that via Zoom, so rather than trying to have a large group come together, we will meet as a Zoom, in a Zoom's version. If anybody who's watching tonight would like to get that address, they'd please contact my office, 283-2100. I'd be happy to share that so they can participate. With that, Mr. President, that's my report. Be happy to answer any questions if the trustees have any.
Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And next item on the agenda is item number four, board reports. Now, this is for information only, and we'll start with trustee Karini. Okay, trustee Wilkie?
So, September 12th, we lost a former school trustee and our mayor, and I just want to use my board report to spend a minute and just for him to send out prayers and sympathies to his family, and that Carson has a big hole in its heart because of it, and we'll miss Mr. Bob a lot. So, if we could just take a minute for that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I attended Pioneer's virtual open house, which was really interesting. I don't know if you guys got the flyer, but then you got to go into each classroom that you wanted to do at different sessions, and it was really interesting, and the JAG one was particularly interesting. A lot of the parents there didn't realize all the opportunities that that JAG program allows those students, so it was a good opening for them, and they have 32 in the JAG this year, so we're pretty excited about that. And then Tuesday and Wednesday, we're spent with the NIAA. We are sticking to the approved schedule of starting the winter sports in January, and then the fall sports after that, and the spring sports. Of course, the seasons will be shorter, and the football season will only be six games, and there might be a playoff or a championship in that seventh week. That hasn't been decided yet by the, by the 5A North. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Varner?
Yes, for Warwick Bray, they've completed their MAP testing for grades one through five, and now the teachers will be working with the students on their intervention plans for both math and reading. And then recently, they also had their virtual back-to-school night. Teachers gave presentations, and they said it was fairly well-attended, but only about 50% of the parents really attended virtually. They said that was quite lower than what it has been in the past. And I, oh, I'm sorry, one more. Their fall pictures are scheduled for Thursday, October 8th, and Friday, October 9th, and then the remote learners will be able to come from 1:00 to 2:00 PM to get their school pictures on those days. I also like to say that I've had the chance to talk to several of the teachers here recently and go in their classrooms and see them teaching, and I just would really like to thank the teachers, all the school staff, all the administration, all, and even the parents, for all their work during this difficult period of time. We all know it's a difficult period of time, something the schools have never experienced before, and hopefully, people are doing as well as they can, and we just hope that at some point in time, we can get back to normal. That's going to be a while down the way, but that's our hope, and we are thinking about all the teachers and staff, parents, and what they're going through.
Joe?
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, not a formal report tonight, but I just wanted to put my usual plug in, especially now that we're, you know, we're at this hybrid model, students aren't on campus all day. I didn't want to, I want to remind the teachers, or the teachers, the seniors and even the juniors, to pay attention to the SCOOP for scholarship information. That's still available. That's still, as I understand, being maintained, and there's a lot of scholarships out there for students, and I want to encourage everybody to, even though they're not on campus as much, to go online and take a look at that and make sure you don't miss out on any opportunities. I wanted to reiterate Stacy's tribute to Mayor Kroll. I think it goes without saying, great guy. When I was running for the school board or considering running for it, he was the first person I met with, and he was gracious enough. He met with me, we chatted, we had lunch, and he gave me his thoughts on, you know, what a trustee is, what they do, what's important, and he checked in on me periodically, and then we had our joint meetings, and sitting alongside of him, you know, he would always keep it lighthearted, crack a joke or two, but, you know, he'd stay on topic, but he'd also find a way to keep it lighthearted, and just an all-around great individual and a huge loss to our city. So, my best wishes go out to his family as well. Last, just in general, teachers and parents, same thing. It's very different this year. Everybody's doing real well. Some parents are wondering how they can keep up with all this. Others are wanting more, as you would expect. It's, you know, it's kind of divided, but in general, I think everybody's coming around, they're starting to understand what it is we need to do, and everybody's doing the best they can to make it happen. So, you know, the teachers are working extra hard. I know there was some question as to whether or not their workload would be more. It's certainly a little more, maybe a lot more for some, but everybody's really working hard and doing the best they can, students, teachers, and parents. So, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Joe. Lupe?
So, for Empire Elementary School, I met with Mrs. Squires, and I had the opportunity to observe their Monday morning staff meeting. It was a very nice collaboration among colleagues. It was a very nice thing to observe, and I appreciate everyone's collaboration efforts. Mrs. Squires informed me that the professional learning days offered by Dr. Leanne Morris and Carrie Pryor was very effective, and the teachers are using all the tools provided in the training, so that's really, it's super awesome. They are in the process of creating videos in English and Spanish through Parent Square to share helpful tips with parents. She also informed me that she has noticed parents that typically don't attend educational events are reaching out to them for help, so it's really good to see that, you know, parents are engaged. They have live Zoom assistance Tuesday through Friday, and they also have assistance in Spanish for three hours each day. They send information to the parents with the instructions so that they are able to log into Zoom. They have a virtual open house tomorrow night, if I'm not mistaken, Wednesday, from 5:30 to 7:00, and then they also have a fire safety contest and an art contest for their, for the students. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Laurel?
Thank you. Mr. Brown at Fridge would like to thank all the families for their support and dedication in assisting their children, and he reports that they will be finishing MAP testing this week. For Fremont, Dr. Ward says, "All is right in the world of Fremont," and she'd like to give a huge thank you to the Hope Crossing Church for being such a great partner and letting them do the parent pickup for the busing students at that location. So, good things happening at both Fridge and Fremont, and I'd also like to thank all the teachers. Last week was a really tough week, I think, on everybody with the smoke. Teachers, Mr. Stokes, that was probably tough with everything, and also the parents, too, because I, I've got my kids that I'm keeping track of, and I'm also home during the day, and I know that there's a lot of parents that are working and then coming home to kids who are supervising themselves and then trying to make sure that they're staying on top of it. So, I think anything that anybody's doing right now is above and beyond what they ever thought they would be doing, and I just am really appreciative of all that, and just a bit of advice, if you can bake cookies for your kids and bribe them, that seems to work pretty well to, you know, if you finish this, you can have one. I'm not sure how long-term that'll work, but for now, it's getting us through.
Was that, was that it, Laurel?
Yeah.
Sorry. So, we had, last weekend, we had our joint meeting with NASB, the Board of Directors and Executive Committee, and a lot of time is spent right now on gearing up for the professional development or the conference coming up in November, and if you're interested in volunteering, you could probably let Laurel, Stacy, or I know, and I'm sure there's lots of stuff that could, we could have some help with. Another thing that the Executive Committee is working on is gearing up for what we're anticipating will be a busy legislative session, and so, they're working with Jessica and looking at some potential bills that would benefit all students in the state, and so, I think, Stacy, am I missing anything? I think that was really the gist of the meeting.
That was the gist of it, but it did come up in our Pacific Region President's Call on Thursday, that we are the only state in that region that's actually having an in-person conference, so it might be something that's going to be reevaluated to after hearing that information, and I'm not sure how that would work, but...
I know that they knew, sorry, I know they knew that they were the only state still having an in-person one, one a few weeks ago, so...
It seems to have sparked a new conversation.
Well, and I think, right now, everything sparks a new conversation. I think none of us are on real sure footing right now, and I think that's the other part of, you know, I've heard from teachers that are frustrated. I had somebody send me a message and really inquire if we, as the Board of Trustees, were not believing the amount of work they're doing, and I reiterated our level of support and appreciation of what they are doing, and I think that I wanted to state that publicly, that we are pleased with what our teachers are doing. We understand how challenging it is. We know that there are some areas that our team needs to help them develop, so professional development and learning how to use some of these tools to meet the needs of our kids, but certainly, that's not criticism of the teachers, that's the reality, that we're in a whole new world right now, and so, I just want to say thank you to the teachers, and I know how hard they are working. You know, several are friends, colleagues, former coworkers, and then I've also heard from a number of families, and Mr. Stokes and I talked about this yesterday, and there is a high level of concern about our schedule, our hybrid schedule, and, you know, I would just hope parents understand that we are government agency and we are required to follow the governor's orders, and part of the lobbying that needs to happen is with the governor's office, because we can't change what the capacity of our buildings is and what we are allowed to do in our schools, and so, I think I would speak for everybody on this board and as well as our entire district administration team, when I say, if we could, we would love to have every student in school every day, but we have to make sure that we are able to do that safely and within the parameters set by the state, and so, I know it's frustrating, but I just hope the parents would understand that and support us in meeting the needs of our students.
And to remember, we're not the only city or state doing this. I mean, at our Pacific Region meeting, we even talked about, there's only two states that are, that have the, in school five days a week, and that's Arizona and Utah, and that's only in certain areas. So, it's not like the hybrid system or the online learning is anywhere else, you know, it's not something that we're doing by ourselves. Everybody's trying to get through this, and I don't think it's lost on anybody how hard the parents, the teachers, and the kids have to work to make this work. But if, you know, if we could get the state to alleviate some of the limitations on these teachers, that would be, at least that's one thing that maybe at this level, that we can lobby for and try to get through, is to at least make that easier for them.
Yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate that if there was something we could do, we would do it, and I know that certainly Mr. Stokes and his team are looking at what they can do to bring those buildings to capacity safely to meet the needs of as many students as we can, and so, I just wanted to, as well as everybody else, give my appreciation for not just the teachers and the administrators, but also the parents at home, because I know this is a true challenge. So, next item on the agenda is association reports. Not seeing any in the room. Raymond, do we have any?
Seeing none online.
Okay, thank you. Item six on the agenda is public comment. Comments will be accepted in person through telephonic participation or through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note, the public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other or participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not to simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. Do we have any public comment?
Seeing no public comment.
You do have some. Okay, Ms. Cortez?
This comment is from Tiara Babula. She's a fifth-grade computer science teacher at Mark Twain Elementary. During last school year and this one, I've used the, I've used the district purchase device management platform, GoGuardian, with my students. All three through 12 grade teachers and students have GoGuardian licenses purchased by the district. For me, GoGuardian has been a lifesaver when students are in my computer science lab. I am able to monitor the tabs that students have opened and what they're doing in real time on their device. I can also create scenes which allow me to block access to certain websites if needed, or limit how many tabs a student can have open at one time. I can also push out to students a website and have it open on their Chromebooks to exactly that link I pushed to them. I am able to privately chat with the student, and they can chat back with me if needed. This is great, because if there's a student off-task and on a site they shouldn't be, I can send them a private message in chat about this and close that tab on their computer. There are now additional functions in GoGuardian that have been released recently due to hybrid and remote learning. The teacher can now broadcast their screen to students, which is like a screen share in Zoom, and I, as the teacher, can also turn on my webcam and microphone and share with students my webcam and me speaking. I have used these features when students are physically in my classroom, because this gets them used to seeing features, excuse me, used to seeing a teacher with a screen share. So, on days when our hybrid students need to go to remote learning because of weather-related conditions or quarantine, et cetera, and need to Zoom, they are somewhat familiar with seeing a screen share and the teacher on webcam and hearing them. I feel GoGuardian is a platform that our remote-only teachers and students should have the ability to use during school hours only when students are learning at home. I Zoom with the remote-only students and teach my computer science class and find that it is, it is extremely difficult to help Kinder, first graders, second graders with remote learning when I can't see what tabs they have open and what they're doing on their screen. Imagine, if you will, joining me on a Kinder Zoom session. The students join the Zoom and turn on their webcams. They can see me and see my screen just, shared just fine. Now, all of a sudden, I'm asking them to open a second tab or window. Now, Kinder, students who can't even find letters on a keyboard are being asked to manage multiple windows and tabs. Very quickly, things begin to fall apart. One student has a parent beside them and are able with parent support to manage multiple windows and tabs and navigate. You have six other students all raising their hands and yelling out that they need help. They don't know where to go or what to click. You have another student raising their hand, and when you call on them, they see they are clicking where I am asking them on the screen share, but nothing is happening, and then you, as the teacher, realize it is because they are trying to click and interact with the screen share.
Renee, that's three minutes, so can we add the remainder of those comments on the record?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's good to hear Tiara is working with students again, so, I haven't seen you in a long time, so, good job getting back in the classroom. Do we have any other public comment?
Seen no public comment online.
Thank you. Seen none. We will move on to item number seven. Presentation to introduce and demonstrate parent dashboard information for parents' guardians on remote learning tools and resources and other parent information for CCSD. This is for discussion only. Raymond, good evening. Raymond, while you're getting set up there, you know, when Tiara was talking about people being on the wrong links or webpages, AJ's face kind of told me that would be him if he was one of our students. He had that look.
And he was trying to help me over here. Good evening, trustees and President Walker, Raymond Maderas for the record. So, I'm here tonight to introduce you to our latest addition to our dashboard collection. So, we have a student dashboard and an educator dashboard, and now we have one for our parents as well. So, our student and educator dashboard have been really successful in centralizing information, making it really easy to access resources. So, we thought, why not do that for our parents as well? To access the parent dashboard, from our main website, you scroll down to about the middle of the page, you'll see a collection of dashboards right here, student, parent, and educator. So, clicking on the parent dashboard will take you directly to the parent dashboard, of course. You'll see that it's a, it's very similar to the, to the other dashboards that you saw in a previous board meeting, meaning, so the student dashboard and the educator dashboard, they're, they're all built on the same simple type of design, which is a, a flat structure, meaning that the website's not really deep, so you don't have to dig around to find buried information. So, everything's really like one or two clicks away. So, up on the top section here, you can see the remote learning tools and resources. And, just so you know, these are, additional resources are being built out and added to this, so we'll continue to add based on feedback we get from our stakeholders. So, I'm going to jump into parent square as an example. And, you can see the sub-page here, it'll have information on what parent square is, how to access it, how to get support for it, some FAQs in both English and Spanish. So, there's a lot of information about it. We're not just taking our parents to the login screen, we're giving them some background info on how to get help, on where to access the app, on where to access the website, those kinds of things. So, here's where you get the information to get the app. You can download it with a QR code or by clicking on the links. And the best part about this is the parent training here at the bottom. So, we have a series of English videos and Spanish videos for our parents to look at, to help guide them and help them in the use of parent square. And if I go back, the other links are very similar here. Google Classroom, for example, has information about what it is, how to access it, how to get support for it. And there's this great video right here that just really goes through A to Z on, on Google Classroom, on all the different features and functions within it, how to help students, it is one specifically for parents, so how to help students access their assignments, look at their calendar, see when things are due, how to turn in things, that kind of stuff. Moving down, there's another section for parent information. So, here we have a collection of programs and services. I won't go through all of these areas, but I just wanted to kind of touch base on some of these. So, COVID-related information, quick links for academic calendar, for example, library services, those kinds of things. And then there are, there are categories down below that are, that tend to be of interest for parents. So, nutrition services, there's a direct line, how to contact them when they're available, the, the app for nutrition services, and many folks don't even know that there's an app available. There's, there's an app there, there's additional information which would take you to the nutrition services website on the, on the, their main website, I should say. Bus routes, so clicking on this will get, will take you straight into the bus routes. So, there's no digging around for that. Technology. So, here's where parents would go to learn about digital learning and get some help with Chromebooks, learn about the basics of Chromebooks, some troubleshooting tips. So, for example, if your Chromebook won't turn on, here's some steps that you can do in order to resolve that issue, if it's not charging. Again, we'll continue to add things to this as we find trends, things that are, you know, pain points with our parents, we'll continue to add on, onto this list. All right, let me go back. And then parent guides. So, I know this is one that Mr. Hicks is particularly proud of, he helped me put it together. So, parent guides, when you, we, I don't know if you guys are familiar with how it was before, but it was, it was kind of hard to find, it was difficult to, to navigate. So, here you can see it's, it's laid out quite nicely with Kinder for second, all the way up through fifth grade. And clicking on any of these areas, math for example, for, let's go second grade math. And here's where you can see the parent guides with the different marking periods, there's marking period one, two, and three. So, these are to help our, our parents, as you know, with participating in the learning process at home and helping their students. All right, let me go back.
On our, on our main webpage, aren't the parents able to select Spanish and it translates everything into Spanish for them? Is that, am I thinking of, there's so many different websites I deal with, but I, I felt like parents could select Spanish and then it translated the content?
So, you can do that depending on your browser. It depends on the capabilities of your computer. If you're using Chrome, it has that capability to take any web text, translate it to Spanish. If the document is a Word document, it will need to be converted to HTML format or web-based in order to be able to take advantage of the same browser type of translation. A lot of folks have screen readers that will convert it as well. But I guess that's the long answer to your question, but yeah, depending on your browser, you can translate it.
Well, and I mean, and I know that as you're working towards improvement, if there's a way to add that in there for our Spanish-speaking families, I think that'd be huge, because it's a lot of information, and it's, if you can read it, it would be easy to find it, but otherwise, you're kind of guessing, I think.
So, I just took the webpage here, using the browser translator, and took it to Spanish, or converted it to Spanish. So, that's a, a capability for the website itself. Some of the embedded documents, if we have them currently in a PDF format or a Word document, we need to work on getting those either translated to Spanish and posted in both languages, or converted to a plain text, so that way it can be converted by the translator that's built into the browser.
So, maybe we could just add a link on there, given directions on how to do that?
Yeah, that'd be a, a great addition. I'll go ahead and add that to it. And that is, that is all I, I had on the parent dashboard. I just really wanted to introduce you guys to it and let you guys know that, you know, we're hearing feedback from our stakeholders around, you know, we really need to access this information, how do we get to it, there's some confusion in that area. So, taking the mystery out of, out of where these things are and consolidating it, and, you know, helping make it easier for our parents to participate in their students' learning was really what we were trying to do here. Are there any questions?
All right, just, just a comment. I know that having access to the calendar quick and easy is something parents always like, and then a thought I had when I saw the nutrition services, if you can include the menu, because that's something parents like to be able to look up, a, a quick link to that, so they can tell their kids, yes, you want to eat this today, so...
Raymond, how, how do you generally hear back from parents? Do they, is there a, you know, is there a link on here where they can submit questions? Or are you getting phone calls or emails? Or, I'm just wondering, if you're hearing from any parents, and if so, how so?
So, I hear from parents through multiple channels. I hear direct emails, phone calls that come into the superintendent's office or to principals, and they relay it to me from teachers who relay it to me. So, it's, it's a lot of pass-through mostly, how I'm getting this information. So, but I do also receive emails directly and phone calls from parents occasionally. But it's mostly from teachers and principals and Mr. Stokes's office.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, because I know you, we're getting, I'm just going through what I hear from my wife and some other teachers I talk to. Some of the parents, they're, they're getting better, but they're struggling, and I'm just wondering if they're communicating, so that, like you said, you know, we can't fix a problem if we don't know a problem exists. And so, if there's an easy way on here, unless I missed it, to where they can go in and, you know, submit a question, you know, I don't know if that, if that's the right place to do it, but just making sure our parents know, hey, if you have a question, this might be the best way to get it to us.
Well, I'll definitely explore putting some kind of option on there. I think parent square is a good spot in order to get parent feedback now. That system has been highly utilized by our, by our parents and our schools to communicate out information and receive information back. We do at the, at the district level have access to some of that communication, so we can kind of see what's, what parent pain points are and that kind of thing. But I think it would be a good addition to, to add some, some information onto the parent dashboard to give them some guidance on how to provide feedback.
No, I thank you for that. And I know we have it on parent square, but I just think, given what we're going through and what they're going through, you know, the, the more options that just kind of jump out at them, the better, probably.
Yeah, I think, I think putting it up here too will make it easier for them to access, it's, it's right in front of them.
Thank you, Raymond. This is actually a great tool, so I think that, for parents, I mean, you know, as a principal of a school, I sit and listen to my secretary's answer questions that you have highlighted on this page all day long. So, I think this is, this is a tool I might be using a little bit myself, so thank you.
I'll talk to my counterpart, Alan, in Lyon, and see if I can't get him to build you a dashboard.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. So, item number eight is adoption of CCSD test procedures and security plan for the 2020-2021 school year, as required by NRS 390.275. This is for possible action. Ricky, good evening, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, long time no see.
Yeah, and thank you for letting me present tonight. Yeah, for the record, Ricky Medina, in the test security plan that I'm presenting to you, it has been the same exact plan for at least the last three years. I want to say a lot longer than that, probably for a while there with Mrs. Kima, the, the plan, this was the, the plan. So, not much has changed. And, so I'll open it up for questions. Before that, I know that one question that I'm going to get is just about, kind of in general, about testing. And currently, it doesn't look like the Nevada Department of Ed or the US Department of Ed are going to be offering any waivers this year for assessment or for accountability. However, we've kind of gotten some conflicting information about testing. So, for the Vergans test, we were able, that's the kindergarten test that's given the week before kind of school starts. That test, we tested all the, the hybrid students. If students were remote students, they had the option to test, but they didn't have to. For MAP testing, the state worked with NWA to, basically, NWA opened up that test so that kids could proctor their own tests at home on their devices. Teachers basically opened up Zoom so that they could observe the kid while they were testing. All of the other state tests, right now, there's a memo that's gone out that said that we are going to be required to test all of our students. But there's also been some conflicting guidance that there, for remote students, that it's not required, that we will be strongly encouraging those kids to come in and test. So, in the future, we'll, we'll get some, as we get closer to testing, I imagine we'll get some firmer guidance from the state on whether or not testing is going to be required for everybody, or if it's just going to be required for hybrid students, or if it's, or what the, what it's going to look like three months from now. So, with that said, what questions do folks have?
Joe has a question.
Thanks, Ricky. Yeah, it, it sounds like we have a lot of information or direction we still need, but it's partly a question and partly a comment. I start thinking about the equity among all students. If we're, right now, if the plan is to have our hybrid students take this test, and then it's voluntary for the ones online, it's, yeah, so it's a, I'm, I guess my question is, when do we think we'll get some more clarification on this?
Yeah. I, I think that it's kind of up in the air. I think that there's a couple of things kind of in play. I think after the election in November, that, that could have a potential impact, because the current US Department of Ed is saying that no waivers are going to be offered. Depending on that election, those results, that could stay the same or that could change. Typically, even in, not on COVID years, I think that there's kind of three departments that handle testing at the Department of Ed. There's the assessment group that handles kind of the, the state assessments that we've done for a while, like the S-Back, the fifth and eighth grade science tests, the Endocourse. There's another group that handles the WEDA test, and then another group that handles MAP, which is the three-by-three group. And typically, it's the assessment group that kind of drives a lot of the decision-making around assessment. But because their assessments don't really start until the access test with January, typically, we don't get a lot of information until then.
Okay, thank you. And then maybe one more quick question, and Tasha, maybe you might, but how concerned are we if, say, where we're at now kind of is the plan moving forward, or, you know, as far as our direction? I mean, are we, are we concerned about early MAP testing in terms of knowing where our kids are and how our, I would assume we are, how our hybrid students are doing versus our remote learning students?
Yeah, I, I think that there's concern across the board. I think that we, I'm a little bit conflicted with the testing, because I think that a big component of kind of standardized testing is that things need to be standardized, that you can't have kind of a different procedures for your hybrid students as opposed to your students that are remote learning. So, like with MAP testing, that's one of my concerns, is that we have some students that are taking the test in the classroom with a teacher, we have other students that are taking it on their device at their house with, with or without the support of their parents. But at the same time, I'm also concerned that we aren't going to have assessment data for our students. So, there's a part of me that wants to say, no, there shouldn't be any testing, but there's another part of me that says that there needs to be some sort of testing so that we know kind of what impact COVID has had, had on us, and how do we plan going forward?
Tash, if you some for the record. One of the conversations that Ricky and I have had in the past month is, again, really the, the concern over the validity of our test scores. And we have very well-intended parents at home, sometimes too well-intended, who want to see their children do extremely well. And therefore, we're finding that some of our preliminary scores are extremely high compared to what they've been in the past, and we find that puzzling since we did have remote education going on all of fourth quarter last year. So, validity is a concern. And when, and when we have test scores that aren't valid and that we can't really use for planning and informing instruction moving forward, it's really not beneficial to the student then. They're, they're not really getting anything out of taking the assessment, nor are teachers getting anything out of the data that comes from that assessment. So, that's a, a huge concern. I would just plead with our families to understand, the assessments are not meant to grade students, it's not our intent to grade them, it's our intent to assess where your child is at, where your learning gaps are, and then be able to plan for instruction moving forward. So, we also feel, Dr. Medina and I, you know, that, that the challenge is going to be four years forward, because it's not just this year, we won't have good baseline data after this year, to even have next year to be able to see if we've had growth or where our consistent weaknesses are. So, it's, we don't want kids to take tests just for the sake of taking tests. And that's a concern, and that's one thing that I know that Dr. Medina is really communicating to our Department of Education as best he can on behalf of our district, and I know other districts have the same concerns. So, hopefully, they'll come up with some... So hopefully, they'll come up with some solutions for us. I agree that the concept of excluding or excusing remote learners from doing any kind of assessment and only having students in session, take that, again, it, it really, it takes away the, the reason that we use that, those test assessment data. So it makes it kind of an obsolete task. So, so we're hoping, we're hoping our state will figure out an approach to that. And in the meantime, we'll be making sure that we communicate with our schools and with our parents and our students, and you as the board, of course, what those decisions are that come down from the state.
Joe, and, and I don't, just to add on to that, I think I've read some reports lately that kind of show that lawmakers on both sides of, of the aisle are still pushing for us to maintain testing. So I don't think it's a one-sided issue. I'm not sure that even after the election, anything's going to change. I would anticipate we're going to have some kind of testing this year unless something happens like last spring, which I'm hoping we don't get there again.
And I would, you know, and I think, I think the testing's important to a degree, of course. I mean, we've had these conversations for a long time, you know, is too much testing too much? But some level of testing is important. But again, if it's not, like you said, like both of you said, if it's not equitable amongst all students, it doesn't mean a whole lot. So hopefully, we'll have a good plan in place.
I guess I just have one question and several comments. When they're taking the test at home on the computer, isn't the teacher observing what's happening via the computer screen?
Yeah, so, so after, well, we kind of identified that kind of there were some parents potentially helping, the, the guidance that has gone out to our test coordinators to train our, our teachers on is that if they observe anything suspicious or out of the ordinary or anything inappropriate, that they shut down the test session and then report that to the, the vice principal. And the vice principal or the teacher, one of them will make a phone call back to the parent, and ultimately, the, the test coordinator will decide whether or not to invalidate that test or whether or not to let the student continue with the testing.
We've seen, we've had reports from teachers where they've seen well-intending parents giving hand signals to their children and, you know, just really trying to be really super supportive and helpful. I mean, I know they mean the best. I know they mean super well for their kids and they want to be there, but that has been reported from, from some of our families or from some of our teachers, excuse me.
Thank you. And then I just have a couple, a real small grammatical things. If, on page number four of the document, under District Test Security Plans, if you look at the first, the second paragraph, start the first sentence and the second paragraph, right before the bullets, it says, "The district plan is consistent with the procedures outlined in or the Nevada Department of Education." Shouldn't it be "in" or "by" the Nevada Department of Education? I think there's this word missing there is all.
Okay, thank you.
Then on the-
I'll make that correction.
Okay. And then on the second bullet point, and the second, well, I'll just read it, "The manner in which the school officials will contact the school district test director reporting, regarding reports of testing irregularities," and how the test director, it says, "of behalf of the board." That should be maybe "on behalf of the board" instead of "of"?
Yeah.
And then the only suggestion I would make is, in the first sentence, when you first mention Department of Education, maybe in parentheses, put NDE behind it because later on, it's just referred to as NDE, and later on, the material underneath that.
Okay, so I did that at the top of page three, but I'll, where else would you like that added?
Was it on page three? I didn't see that. Because I read that a couple times.
Yeah, it's in bold at the top.
Is available on the NDA. Okay, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. And that's all I have, thank you. Overall, I think the document looks real well, real good.
Ricky, those kids are having a little bit too much fun at home. It's bedtime.
Yeah. It's 24 hours distance learning over here.
All right, anything, any other questions for Ricky? If not, this is a motion for potential action.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the Carson City School District test procedures and test security plan for the 2020 and 2021 school year as submitted in accordance with NRS 390.275.
Wilkie, second.
We have a motion by Dawn, second by Joe. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none, any public comment?
Seeing no public comment.
All right, seeing no public comment, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ricky. Get back to teaching, I guess. Item number nine, presentation on possible adoption of district-wide restorative discipline plan for the 2020-2021 school year as required by NRS 392 for possible action. Mrs. Fuson, good evening.
Thank you, President Walker, Tasha Fuson for the record. Section 5.5 of Assembly Bill 168 from the 2019 Nevada Legislative Session made changes, substantial changes to NRS 392.4644, which requires the Board of Trustees of each district, school district, to establish a plan to provide for the progressive discipline of pupils and onsite review of disciplinary decisions. There was three, or six other requirements set forth that within the plan, you had to develop it with input and participation of teachers, school administrators, support staff and parents. Two, it had to be consistent with the written rules of behavior prescribed in accordance with NRS 392.463. Three, include provisions designed to address specific disciplinary needs and concerns of each school within the school district. Four, provide for the temporary removal of a pupil from a classroom or other premise of a public school in accordance with NRS 392.4645. Five, it had to provide for the placement of a pupil in a different school within the school district in accordance with NRS 392.466. And six, it had to include the names of any members of a committee, members of a committee to review the temporary alternative placement of pupils required by NRS 392.4647. So there was obviously several requirements about what needed to be contained in the plan. In addition to that, it did, it does require that honor before September 15th of each year, principals of each school are required to review the plan in consultation with teachers, school administrators, support staff, parents and students, and based on that review, make recommendations to the Board of Trustees to revise the plan. And then post a copy of the plan or the revised plan as provided by the school district on the internet website maintained by the school. And then in addition, to distribute a copy of the plan to all district employees. So at this point in time, we do not have an adopted plan for our district. I did bring it in front of the board last year, and we wanted to make some changes to Board Policy 525 and to get some clarification from the State Attorney General regarding suspensions and expulsions, et cetera. So this is the same plan I brought in front of you last year with the recommendations that you made during the September, I put the date on it, the September 10th, 2019 school board meeting. So I took the recommendations that you gave me at that point in time, as well as then it has now been reviewed at each of our 10 sites by their site teams. I've taken their feedback, which really was minimal, had to do with verbiage and just clarification of, of intent, and put together what you see is the draft in front of you now. Just to briefly go through the pages, I won't go in depth because, again, everyone's kind of seen it before, but if you look at page one, it starts with an introduction of the intent and the reason for the plan. The second part of that is on prevention and intervention, what we do within our school system to prevent and intervene when we have misconduct, including communication. On page two, it talks about supervision, and then it also talks about the intervention activities that are done at our sites within the district. Towards the bottom of page two, it does talk about the fact that we use a multi-tiered instructional support model with a focus on prevention to deter negative behaviors. What that means is we are, we use a tiered behavioral approach. So with the support of our school counselors and school social workers, for instance, we do tier one, which is what all students get in a, in a school. So it's like, next week is the week of respect, where we talk about bullying and anti-bullying activities. So that would be a tier one support. Tier two support is when you have, for instance, a social worker will work with a small group of students, you know, like maybe in a, honestly, this is, this is a thing, but in a, in a mean girl, a group of students who have been involved in bullying, girl, you know, girl and girl bullying kind of thing. So they'll do a group with students who have those issues and then one-on-one intervention. So that's what the multi-tiered system of support refers to. And then on page three, towards the bottom, it talks about classroom restorative disciplines. We do expect that to occur in the classroom, and each teacher is required to establish a classroom restorative discipline plan that is then communicated to parents and to students, of course, and then a copy is given to their supervising administrator. On page four, it talks about administrative interventions and how we determine consequences, and also the fact that we do embed social-emotional learning into our curriculum. So it is embedded at all levels, K through 12, and is currently being, for instance, used as the basis of our Monday homeroom meetings, right? Checking in with students, seeing if they know how to problem solve, work with others, those types of skills. In the middle of page four, talks about the restorative discipline plan distribution, so the fact that it is given or will be given when it's approved to all faculty and staff members. Talks about staff training, and then in specifically left the, the NRS on that next one that says plan for the temporary removal of the pupil from the classroom, so, so that you could see exactly where that's laid out within the plan. On page five, it does have the names, again, as required now in NRS of the folks that serve on those intervention assistant teams for each of our 10 schools. So it has the, the actual names as required. So that's page five, six, and seven. And then in the middle of page seven, that's where we specifically address the plan for placement of a pupil in a different school within the districts, again, as required in that Assembly Bill. And then at the bottom of page seven, it talks about the prohibitive conduct and consequences. And on page eight, many of these behaviors have their own board policies and administrative regulations that are assigned to them. So that's what lists there. And then when you get to page nine, I believe it was trustee Wilkie who specifically requested that I put the definitions in, since we were listing, you know, all those other infractions, what were their definitions? So on page nine, actually, that's the rest of the document, page nine, 10, 11, and 12, it specifically has the definitions, whether they're a district or an NRS definition for those behaviors. So that is the plan as it, in its draft form at this point in time. Any questions, comments, suggestions?
It looks really good overall. I just have one suggestion. Is it very first under introduction, where you just say the board? I think we've had conversations in the past where we're going to say the Carson City School Board. Is it just the board? I'm sorry. Under introduction, where it says the board? I think we've had discussions in the past about maybe making it Carson City School Board Trustees or something like that, so it's just the board. And that's really the only comment I have, thank you.
Any other question? All right, this is for possible action, so entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the district-wide restorative discipline plan for the 2020-2021 school year as submitted in accordance with NRS Chapter 392.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Joe, second by Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, any public comment?
Seeing no public comment.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, President Walker. And just next step, so you know, I will make sure that all of our schools get the final copy of this. It gets on our website as well as the individual school websites. And then we do have to report to the State Department of Education, I think, by November 15th. So I want you to know, we're, we're doing extremely well in terms of that, that timeframe when we report to the board. So thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, discussion on possible, on possible school bond and installment purchase agreement refunding to generate an approximate savings of $350,000 in the general fund. This is for discussion only. Mr. Feeling.
Good evening. Thank you, President Walker. Trustees, thank you for having me back. This evening, it's a rather short presentation, but an opportunity that has presented itself that I think would be of interest to the board. So just kind of taking a little time to explain it and really just looking for feedback and thoughts if it's something you'd like me to pursue going forward. So just a little background on this. So in 2017, the school district did a significant amount of energy efficiency projects around the district, things like putting in LED lighting, trash compactors, HVAC systems being upgraded, things of that nature. In order to finance those projects, we entered into an installment purchase agreement, or IPA. And if you just think of it like a bond, it's basically a bond. There's other details to it, but it's just a bond. Those projects were completed in 2018. We are now one of the most energy-efficient school districts in the country, and, and we are by far the most energy-efficient in the state of Nevada. So a significant upgrade for us. With that energy efficiency comes savings in the general fund. So when you think about our utility costs, like electricity, natural gas, water, all of those are now less than what they used to be. And just as a, I guess, perspective, before 2010, when the solar panels went in, the school district was spending almost $2 million a year on utilities. We now spend about $1 million per year. So it wasn't just these projects, the solar panel projects before then helped, but it's considerably changed over that time. So the savings that, in this case, that these more recent projects generated, that is what is used to pay the financing. So when we first went on board with this company, McKinstry, that did the work for us, they had to guarantee that there would be X amount of dollars, basically, X amount of dollars saved every year. So once they make that guarantee and then everything goes into place, they have to measure and verify that. And there's a third-party company that helps us kind of make sure everything's on the up and up and we're looking at that, making sure we are saving what we were expecting to save. So that, that savings then is used to pay the, again, the financing. And where that's represented on an annual basis to all of you, as you go through the 72 pages of the, the budget when I presented to you, when you look at the, the bottom of the general fund tab, I think it's usually like page 10, has all the different transfers. And I apologize, it's kind of small to see. Raymond, oops, oh no, wrong button? I thought it was the circle. Oh, there we go, look at this. So Raymond has come up with a new doodad here that is taking my presentation to a whole new level. You can see here where it's circled, the inter-fund debt service transfer. So that is, basically, what that represents is a transfer of the savings generated, it moves over to the debt service fund, and then it pays that installment purchase agreement. Okay? So the opportunity then is that these, these IPAs, again, think of them like bonds, they can be refunded or refinanced at, at a lower rate. And what's especially interesting at this point is, while that would generate some savings, it, it actually, in the process, we could move the funding obligation, instead of it being paid for out of the savings in the general fund, we could move it so that it- the general fund, we could move it so that it's paid for entirely out of the debt service fund, so that there would no longer need to be that transfer and it would save the general fund about $350,000 a year. Really, over time, it starts to increase. So again, the upside, if, if we were to go down this road, the, just because simply of having lower interest rates, we would save about $150,000 in interest payments. And that's just due to, again, the lower rates. It would move that annual $350,000 to $400,000 payment that, that transfer out of the general fund, that, that would go away and effectively frees up more money in the general fund. And my thought process on this is, is all of the fears I've been bringing to you over the past months, over a year now, with the change in the funding formula, and now we're dealing with COVID, that it, it's an opportunity maybe to, to help the general fund out with some ongoing payments. And that's really the, the basis of the good out of it. The downside of it is that it moves, basically, it was about a $5 million findings, at the time, about $5 and a half million. There's about $5 million left to pay. So it moves that obligation to the debt service fund. So again, the general fund just wouldn't be involved anymore. The, the downside then is that that obligation now rests in the debt service fund. And when we do go to bond, our bonding capacity, how much we can go out to bond for, for capital projects is effectively reduced by doing this. So we would otherwise, at, at this point, and we have about, just because of changes in property taxes that have been collected and such, it, it looks as though we would have about 20 to 21 million available to us this year or next year. If we do this, it would be reduced to about 16 million, because it's just eating up, that $5 million is, is eating up that capacity. So again, it, it was an interesting opportunity, I think, to bring up. I'd like to say I have the right answer, and I don't, but I thought it was worthwhile to bring it up to you and just see if there are any thoughts or, or questions or any definite direction as, as to your, what you're thinking.
Well, we definitely want the right answer and we want to see lots of black on that, uh, budget when you make that later this year.
Gotcha.
Any questions for AJ? Stacy?
Just mine, too, since, since I've been the one harping about the doomsday and what's costing and how far we're going to go down. I just think in the long term, I appreciate you looking into it and looking for savings, but I think in the long run, I don't want to give up $5 million for bonding capacities because we just haven't had, doesn't seem like we have 20, what we can do with 21 million, let alone what we can do with 16 million. So that's just my two cents, but I appreciate you looking into that and trying to find us some savings and, and some way not to impact the general fund. So I do appreciate that.
Yeah, AJ, thanks. So, so that $5 million in new debt to pay is just, we're not increasing our debt, it's just moving it from one pot to another.
Yeah.
And the, and the draw, the drawback to that is it reduces our debt service, you know, our, our funding ability.
That's exactly right. Yeah, we're, we're basically, if you just think of it in terms of you're, you're moving the obligation of, of what fund is paying for it. So it's, it's now, instead of the general fund paying for it, the debt service fund pays for it. But then that's also where you pay for bonds when you go out to do that.
And I guess what I'd like to know going forward, before we were in a position where we're voting, you know, we're voting to approve or, you know, the budget, would be if we move it and we were, you know, I'm, I'm with Stacy. I want to be careful we don't, you know, limit ourselves, but at the same time, I'm curious, what is this going to save us if we chose to go that route? You know, what would the savings be incrementally?
Sure. So the savings within the general fund over, over that time? So that's, that's a really good question, because it, it does change over time. It, it actually increases over time. So there's about 15 years left of payments left on this IPA. In this current year, and it's actually, there's an important distinction, too. So that buck, that transfer is about $357,000. And if you're just looking at the transfers over time, they, they will go up over time. By the time, when you get 15 years down the road, that transfer, I think, ends up around like $460,000. So each year, and, and it's somewhat of inflationary increases, but important just to understand, too, that, so the transfer this year is at $357,000. That, that number represents what the guaranteed savings was, but when they go through this process of measuring and verifying what the savings is, it's usually like 20 to 30 to $40,000 more, just depending on what the rates have done for water, for electric, for, for gas. So they're, they're truly, with doing these projects, they're actually still, even if we did nothing, there still is savings that is generating in the general fund just from doing these projects originally. Yeah, it's generally that $350,000 up to about $450,000 over time. So if you think of it more or less, kind of tracking, the savings tracks with inflation, I think that's kind of the easiest way to think about it.
Just in my mind, so I have it clear, if we saved 300, 400,000 or 450,000 per year in the general fund, that money could be used to pay for salaries for our staff?
That is correct. Anything in the general fund? And if I could, Mr. President, just, you know, the, the thought, if, if we were going to do this, Marty Johnson, who works with the district, he's already put together numbers just so we can kind of get a feel for what it looks like. It, it may be that it would be good to wait a little longer until we know the outcome of kind of this new funding formula and really some of the, just still the COVID impact. But we, it's something that we could do rather quickly. So if, I mean, if, if we wanted, we could bring a bond resolution, or a, a bond resolution to you at the next meeting and have it all wrapped up within a month, basically, a month and a half. But it's something we certainly can wait on to kind of see what happens. The, the only, the only risk is the, the interest rate risk, if, if interest rates would start coming back up. But, but even, even then, if there were no savings involved, we could still move it over to the debt service fund, which would save some general funds. So there's not a rush on it by any means, but just something of interest to keep in our back pocket, if anything else.
Thank you, AJ.
Oh, Dawn?
I guess I, I'd be a proponent of saving in the general fund. I think we're going to need that more than the, the bonds.
So with that, I'll, I guess at this point, just gather all the information I can and just have that ready to go and maybe bring it back at a future meeting for, for the discussion.
Just one more thing, AJ. If we, if we did lower our bond capability to 16 million, what's our next fiscal year that we'd be able to bond in for how much?
So the, the next cycle, regardless of what we do here, whatever the choice is, in 20, 2025, we have a number of bonds that get paid off, so our capacity increases again. We'd have about 25 million at this point that would be available.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, Approval of the Consent Agenda. This is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
All right, we have a motion from Stacy, second by Joe. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none. Any public comment?
Seeing no public comment.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, Informational Items. Any questions for Mr. Stokes or staff about any informational items? I won't be able to join everybody for the community PLC tomorrow. I have a prior obligation, but I know we'll be well represented, but as usual. Item 13, Request for Future Agenda Topics.
I would just say that I think AJ, you're going to bring this back again. So that would be a next, on the next agenda, or do we put it off a little bit further? That's for you, Mr. President.
Oh, you're asking me? I think that, I think we'll let AJ get the information together and then Mr. Stokes and I could collaborate and get it on the nearest agenda. I don't want to commit to next agenda if he doesn't have it in two weeks.
We already talked about you need a little bit more time just to kind of see how everything's going to shake out. So I wouldn't put it on the next order.
Well, he might really surprise us and find even more money. That'd be excellent, AJ.
I, I aim to please.
All right. Any other future agenda topics? I think that this is one of the things Mr. Stokes and I have talked about. It's kind of, right now, just, just holding on tightly and seeing what comes our way, which is determining our agendas, it feels like recently. So let's hope it's a light agenda, which means news is good. So with that, we will adjourn. It is 8:20. Thank you, trustee Wilkie, for finally letting us get through some business quickly. Have a good evening, everyone.
Goodbye.